Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no student presentation tonight, but we do have a new student rep. Millie is our new student rep and she'll start working next month. Tonight she gets to cruise. Is there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Smith, there is an addition to the agenda today, which has been placed at the seats of each of the board members. We are asking you to add to other matters for consideration. Item D, consideration of resolution, authorizing superintendent to issue purchase orders and sign contracts for acquisition of equipment and services necessary to replace the boilers at Pecos and middle school. We were able to get some work done late last week, so this is an addition we'd like you to consider later in the board meeting.
Okay. Good recognition. We have a presentation by Pecos and Education Foundation of a technology grant. And we have Lee Finixon and Gail Wojcowski here from the foundation. If you'd step up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Finixon and to my right is Gail Wojcowski. And we have extreme pleasure tonight to present the, represent the Board of Directors of the Pecos and Education Foundation. The Pecos and Education Foundation is a nonprofit community volunteer organization created to support Pecos and public schools. And on behalf of the Pecos and Education Foundation and our local business partner, Stevens Office Supply, whom Gail is representing, we're very pleased to present a check for $20,000 to Pecos and School Board for technology equipment at Pecos and High School and Pecos and Middle School. And Gail will present the check to Mr. Smith on behalf of the Foundation's Stevens Office Supply.
It's actually with extreme pleasure that we are able to present this check. It's a joint effort between Stevens Office Supply and Pecos and Education Foundation. We both firmly believe in the advancement through education and know how important it is and know what a difficult year this has been for our school district. And our business is very blessed to have been so successful and we are very happy to be able to share in that success with our school district.
That's the way to start out the new year. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you. That's a great gift and for the kids and for the teachers and everything. They're going to appreciate it greatly. Thank you. The next, on the agenda is a presentation by the Joint Military Services School Liaison Committee. Mr. Charles French.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The, as you know, the military has a strong presence, military students have a strong presence in Pecos and City Schools. There are approximately 700 military children, military connected children in the school system. And they bring with them a unique set of challenges, being mobile and moving every two to three years, having to make new friends, coming from different school systems, especially now with 50 states having 50 different standards. Not every state has the same SOL requirement. So it takes a lot for the military student to adjust and to get in with all the other students. Pecos and City Schools works great with the military. And we're very fortunate to have partners like Pecos and City Schools and to do all that you do. We've brought a number of programs and projects and we're present in the schools at all times, a number of different times in Hampton, in this school system, as well as the other ones in Hampton Roads. In Hampton Roads itself, we have 67,000 military connected kids. So there are quite a few in this whole area. The school liaisons, like myself and my two counterparts that are out here, I'd like to introduce them. Dave Weichert from the Air Force and Christina Willis, Christina, if you'll raise your hand. She's our Navy representative that will be in the schools when our children have issues or questions. We work jointly. And working jointly is unique for school liaison officers because we don't have just one military represent, one military installation in this area. We were recognized very recently by the Military Child Education Coalition for our programs, for our partnerships that we have with you, with Pecos and City Schools and with other school districts in Hampton Roads. And this is the highest award that can be given. It's a national award that can be given to, for partnership efforts of dealing with military children. So I would like to ask Mr. Smith if you'll come up. We have presented, we have received this, it's called the Pete Taylor Partnership of Excellence Exemplary Award. What is it? It's an award that recognizes that the partnerships that people, that military installations and, and school districts have. So we're very pleased to present you with this, this very prestigious award. I'll read it. It says Pete Taylor Partnership of Excellence. This certificate is to officially recognize and congratulate Pecos and City Public Schools on receiving the Military Child Education Coalition's Exemplary Partnership Award. And it's signed by Dr. Mary Keller, who's the President and CEO of Military Child Education Coalition. This is a very high prestigious award and so we're honored to have it and to present it to all our partners and hope that we can continue the great partnership and you can continue to look out for our military children as you always have. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Charlie for all your help on that and the associates that work with you. I know Dave spends a lot of time. Christina, thank you too for all your help. Next on the agenda is a presentation on a resolution regarding our baseball team. And we have Senator John Miller here and would like to have Coach Bennett up and Doug Green and Adam Posey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. It is indeed a pleasure to be back with you tonight and to, to read this resolution from the Senate of Virginia commending the Pecos and High School baseball team. I understand that come February, after we're done meeting, I'll have to come back again for another resolution for the 2010. And I'm looking forward for two more years for the three-peat resolution. But this one deals with, with 2009. Senate Joint Resolution Number 115 commending the Pecos and High School baseball team. Whereas the Pecos and High School baseball team capped its outstanding 2009 season by winning the Virginia High School League Group AA State Baseball Championship before an enthusiastic crowd at Radford University. And whereas the Pecos and High School Islanders, 28-1, defeated the tough Rustburg High School Red Devils in a dramatic four-to-three game to clinch their second state baseball championship in school history. And whereas the hard-fought game was tied in the bottom of the seventh inning with two outs and the bases loaded, an infield single drove the player on third base home for the winning run. And whereas the Pecos and High School baseball team had an outstanding season, taking home the district and Region One championship titles and was recognized by the daily press as the 2008-2009 area high school athletic program of the, of the year. And whereas the Pecos and High School baseball team received national recognition when seven of the 10 starters on the 2009 team ranked number 29 in the FinalRivals.com national poll. And whereas ACC-bound pitcher Kyle Crockett was named the Daily Press Player of the Year. He led his team in the state championship game with a 434 batting average with three home runs and drove in 21 runs. And whereas the Pecos and High School Islanders will miss the leadership of their head coach, Ken Bennett, who was with the baseball team for 15 seasons and spent the last two years as varsity head coach. However, they will continue to have his support in his new position as Athletic Director. And whereas the 2009 Pecos and High School baseball team enjoyed great success due to the hard work of its players, the leadership of head coach Ken Bennett and the support of students, faculty, staff and parents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate of Virginia, the House of Delegates concurring, that the General Assembly commend the Islanders from Pecos and High School on their 2009 VHSL Group AA State Baseball Championship. And be it resolved further that the Clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Ken Bennett, former head coach, as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for the championship performance of the 2009 Pecos and High School baseball team. Signed Susan Clark Scharr, Clerk of the Senate.
I'd like to congratulate Ken Bennett on an outstanding two years. Pecos and has never been rated that high in the nation as a baseball team and he's done a super job with his coaches and his players. I'd also like to thank Senator Miller. He's always been a friend of Pecos and whenever we need anything, we can call him and he responds quickly to whatever we need. So I'd like to thank you for coming and presenting that. Next we go down to presentations and reports. Operations update. Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Smith, School Board, Dr. Parrish. It's a pleasure, again, after a busy summer, to be before you, share with you some of the operations highlights. This year, as you know, with transportation, we have been busy revising our bus stops, extending our walk distances to be more in line with our neighboring townships and school districts. And our kindergartners will be walking to some stops and we're going to have that posted very shortly next week. In planned operations, you can imagine we are winding down a very busy summer, doing extensive deep cleaning and getting ready for the return of our customer, our children and our teachers. As you know, item D on the agenda is CIP project for the middle school. And I won't bore you with those details. Also, you might notice some enhancements at the elementary school where we've added some handicap ramps and walkways for better accessibility. In food service, I'm pleased to announce that there will be, to our already successful program, some very exciting enhancements at the high school, middle school and throughout the system. That's my ops report.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Moving on to the financial update with Bill Bowen.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Smith, School Board members and Dr. Parrish. And the finance update this evening, I just have a couple of things I'd like to inform you about. First of all, in the coming days, staff will be sending notices to employees informing them of changes to their health insurance plan for the coming year. With the passage of the federal healthcare reform bill, there were some mandates that were included that we had to incorporate in our plan year beginning October 1, 2010. Most notably is a change in dependence, dependent coverage, where now we have to cover employee dependents up to the age of 26, regardless of whether or not they are a full-time student or they are married. So we have been informed by Optima that they are not passing any premium cost onto the school division this year. But we have been informed that we can expect, just on these recent changes, a 2% to 3% increase during the next plan year. So we'll be talking more about that as we get into budget development in January and February and our health insurance renewal process. What I'd also like to talk to you tonight is about state funding. It's a little different than our local and federal and other revenue. But what I'd like to just, like to just say, state revenue comprises of 54% of our budget, which is a significant portion. Unlike the local and federal revenue, when we receive commitments from our local government and we receive commitments from our federal government, those numbers are usually firm fixed numbers and stick with us through the year. But what we've seen in the past couple of fiscal years, as we started off the budget year with our state numbers, we've seen changes throughout the year. And there's several factors that play a part of that, of those changes. First of all, when we go into budget development, one of the first things we look at is our average daily membership. People will look at this and they'll often confuse average daily membership with student enrollment. But there is a difference. Student enrollment is the number of students that you actually have enrolled in your school. Average daily membership is the number of students that are enrolled that actually attend school on a daily basis. And this is how we develop our budget. What we use, there are two projections that are available to us. There's one that's provided by the Department of Education, that they provide to all school divisions, which you can use those numbers. They're, they're very good numbers, they're based on historical averages. But we also do our own projections. And our projections tend to be a little more conservative because we don't want to be caught in a, in a position that we've, we've used somebody else's numbers and we haven't done our homework and then at the last minute, we realize that our numbers have come in short and then we have to go through some budget reduction cycles. But in FY10, we, we used a number that was about 57 students less than what the Department of Education provided us. And final numbers came in and our numbers were a little more accurate. They were a little higher than what we had, but they were much less. The actual number was 37 students less than DOE's number. So we played a conservative number and it worked out, of course. State funding comes to us in four categories. There's the incentive programs, categorical programs, lottery-funded programs and, and standards of quality. The incentive programs are voluntary programs, but in order to receive these funds, the school divisions generally must agree to certain requirements. The incentive programs represent about 6% of our total state funding. Our categorical programs are targeted to specific student populations for needs and are usually mandated by state and federal requirements. This represents a little less than 1% of our total budget. Lottery-funded programs are largely voluntary programs, but through the use of lottery dollars. One of the things I wanted to point out about lottery dollars is lottery appropriations are based on estimates of lottery sales. One of the things that we constantly see from the Department of Education is that when they tell us how much lottery dollars we're going to have, they tell us, they keep reminding us that you're only going to receive what lottery sales have occurred. So we have to keep constant reminder of looking at and watching very closely our lottery dollars. Generally, the bulk of our lottery dollars will come in the last two months of our fiscal year. Our standards of, our standards of quality, these are state share of instructional costs based on the required number of positions for salaries, benefits and support costs. This represents 89% of our state funding. The basic aid and the sales tax, they represent 76% of the SOQ dollars. And largely that basic aid, the basic aid dollars are dependent upon the average daily membership that I talked about earlier, how many students are actually attending school on a daily basis. The average daily membership, daily membership is taken at the school level. We have staff here that accumulate that data and report that monthly to the Department of Education. But on March 31st, we have to send in our final numbers and they're certified by the Department of Education. Once the numbers are certified, then we are informed of our final state basic aid dollars. I've highlighted sales tax because most of, most of last year, I was reporting to you and giving you updates on sales tax revenue. This represents 18% of our SOQ dollars. And again, with, with sales tax money, we're only going to receive what the state collects. This is really dependent upon the economy. So how, how we collect our money, we just continue to watch what happens in the economy and, and we watch these numbers very, very closely. We hope to have an update very, very soon in September or no later than October of revised revenue forecast. And then at that point, we will start reporting those numbers to the board again. I'll just remind you, when we started off in 2010, our budget for sales tax was just a little over $2 million. In September of 2009, we received revised figures that we were going to receive about $151,000 less in sales tax. However, at the end, in June, we received actually $113,000 less in sales tax. So we did bridge that gap just a little bit, but we did still receive less than what we were originally expecting. This table just, just shows the actual state revenue that we've collected in FY10. And again, it gives you a snapshot of how state revenue comes in. Now, revenue's coming into the school division on a monthly basis. But if you'll notice that in, in the last quarter of April and June, you'll see a spike in the revenue. And that's because final numbers for ADM have been finalized and they've been certified. So we start to receive, we start getting notification of our final numbers and then our revenue in this case tended to increase. So you'll see historically, when you look at expenditures and revenues, that the last quarter of our fiscal year tend to be a little higher in receipts and expenditures. And with that, that's just an overview of our state revenue.
Anybody have any questions? No questions, good presentation, thank you.
Yeah, before Dr. Rivia comes up to give an instructional update, I just want to mention that she is going to give you, provide you with some basic information about our progress with, with annual yearly progress in terms of the No Child Left Behind Act. As you know, information was published in the paper last Friday. So she's sort of resharing what was in the media last Friday. But when we move into your work session, we are providing you with a very, very detailed data report that will break down a lot of this data. So for the viewing public, we're giving you a snapshot, but please know that the board's going to be involved in a rather intense discussion about a variety of data later. So I just wanted to let you know that this is sort of a two-part data presentation as Dr. Rivia starts. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Smith, School Board members and Dr. Parrish, it's my pleasure tonight to give you just a snapshot, an overview of some of the data that we have received thus far related to our students' performance. As I continue to talk, I'm going to ask Mr. Caccimilio if we can get the slide show up. Thank you. What I will be sharing tonight is basically going over the two major accountability systems that we as school divisions are held accountable to. That's the state accreditation process, as well as the information related to adequate yearly progress, which is the fed ruled No Child Left Behind mandate. Thank you, Mr. Caccimilio. To begin with, I want to talk about our state accreditation standards. These have been set by the State Department related to student performance in the areas of English, Math, Science and Social Studies. As you can see on the screen beside me, these are the benchmark scores that we have to meet and not only Pecos and, but all school divisions in Virginia have to meet in order to meet the benchmark standards and be considered accredited by the state. So these have not changed. We have been given information that these will change next year, but as, this is what they've been for several years. So this is not new information and is available on the State Department's website. As you can see, for the most part, we have to have a pass percentage rate somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% to 75%. On this slide, I'm showing you what our pass percentage rates were for the various core subject areas. As you can see, almost all of our areas are in the 90th percent. We have a few in the mid to upper 80 percentage rates. But our students by and large are passing the English, Math, Science and Social Studies SOL test that they take in the spring. For most of our students, they take them in the spring. If they're high school students, we actually conduct SOL testing through, in the summer, in the fall, in the winter and also in the spring. So at the high school, the compilation of data is a little more exciting because we have to go to multiple testing scenarios. But I think you can see here that our students by and large are doing very well on the state standards of learning tests that our teachers are teaching the material and our students are learning that material. When we look at it from an aggregate standpoint, these are all of our students averaged together with their pass percentages. The other accreditation standard that we are held accountable to is the No Child Left Behind Act or NCLB. And this is a federally mandated accreditation standard that's based on student performance and participation in reading and mathematics, as well as another academic indicator or a graduation rate depending on our school or the school division. This is something the federal government requires of all schools and school divisions across the nation. So it's important for us to not only report this accreditation, but also it reflects upon how we're doing with related to just reading and math. I would like to point out that once again, this legislation does require that by the year 2013, 2014, that there is an expectation that all students will pass 100% of the test, 100% of the time and 100% of the subgroups. And we'll dive into that a little more deeply when it comes to the presentation during the work session. So with this in mind, my next slide actually shows how we did related to AYP, or Annual, excuse me, Adequate Yearly Progress. Our primary school, which tests no students, because they do not test students, but they're in the elementary grade range, their accreditation is based on the test scores from the elementary school. And the work that our primary school teachers really does impact how our students do. But they did not make AYP because our elementary school did not make AYP. It's important to notice that the elementary school did not make AYP because it missed four of the 29 target areas. And we'll go in-depth into what those target areas are in our work session. The middle school did not make AYP because it missed two of the 29 targets. Our high school did make AYP and the division, as a result of what was going on in our schools, when we aggregated all those numbers together, we as a division did not make AYP and we missed three of the 29 target areas. Majority of the areas where we did not make the benchmark scores to meet AYP were in the areas of special education and students who are economically disadvantaged, which I had presented to you last year as some areas of concern and they continue to be areas of concern for us as a school division. So that is kind of an overview of where we stand with both of the accreditation processes, both at the state level and the federal level. The next piece of information I'd like to provide for you is kind of related to this because I do think that our parents and our community are very interested in the information that we have related to student progress, not just on standardized tests that they take in the spring or at a one-time shot. Our parents have very clearly asked us if there was a way that we could provide them with additional access to information related to their students. Last year, we deployed Power School, which was an upgrade from SASE, which was the student database system that we were using, which was going to be discontinued. So we upgraded to Power School and it has a variety of functions and modules that we can implement. Last year, we implemented Power Teacher. So some of you who are parents on the school board or grandparents in some of our community know about Power Teacher. And we trained our teachers on how to enter their grades into the Power School, Power Teacher module. And that's what we focused on last year. So this year, we are actually moving into a new arena and we're very excited about this. Our parents at the middle school and high school are going to be given the opportunity throughout the school year to remotely access their students' grades in any class that that child is taking. They will also be able to remotely access their attendance. A lot of our neighboring school divisions have this functionality. Our parents have been very interested in this. So we are very pleased that we are going to provide the information to our middle school and high school parents to be able to access this information this school year. It is our plan that we will roll this out incrementally and that in subsequent years, we'll also provide this access to elementary school parents, as well as primary school parents. So this is the first step. We did a small pilot last spring and several of our staff members, who are also parents, actually helped us. actually helped us go through this pilot program of Parent Portal. And they were very excited and very pleased to be able to go in any time of the day or week. You know, their children would say, "Well, I don't have homework," or "I'm doing great, Mom, I'm doing great, Dad, got all my stuff in." And they could go in and check grades, and sometimes the conversation changed. So we are just making sure that our students and our parents are aware at the middle and high school that they will be able to access grades and attendance and a variety of other information through this online portal. And I think it's going to go a long way to addressing what we always strive to do, which is to have strong communication with our parents, with our students, with our staff. So that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Thank you. Very good report, Dr. Rivia.
If I could just take one second, I want to add that, and I know you noticed this on the slide, but I just want to reinforce that the accreditation, state accreditation standards, those are preliminary scores. The state doesn't actually officially release that data until sometime in September. So that's based on the information we currently have. So you will see a big release on that from the state in September. But we're fairly confident that what we're providing you accurately depicts where our students did in terms of the state accreditation, so.
All right, we'll move down to the consent agenda. First item we have is approval of minutes of the July special organizational meeting. That's enclosed. Approval of financial reports enclosed. Personnel action enclosed. Authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed. Approval of change to appropriations in school payroll to be debited to FY10 budget in the amount of $13,808.23. That's enclosed. Authorization to accept and expend in the 2010, 2011 school year grant carryover funds from 2009, 2010. That's enclosed. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Aye.
On that, I would like to say I really like the agenda with all the enclosed attached. It makes it very easy to look things up, and you don't have to go find an attachment, then print it out, and keep bouncing back and forth with everything right underneath it. It makes it nice and easy. I don't know if that's more work for you, but it's nicer on the board's end.
It's very easy to do.
We'll go to other matters for consideration. The first item we have is consideration of approval of minutes of the June regular meeting and work session enclosed. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular June meeting and work session as enclosed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
I need to abstain, I was not at that meeting.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Aye.
The motion carried, five to zero.
Next item we have is consideration of adoption of VSB A code of conduct for school board members. That's enclosed. But I wrote some notes on that because it's the first time that I've had it. It's a number of items on that going through it, I think are very general and to the state because it's issued statewide. I think Beth Ann and I are probably the only ones that went to the team building meeting a couple of years ago, and they covered a lot of these items during that session, and they would cover it again this year when we schedule that. But I think in general, like I said, it's just a general code utilized across the state for all the boards. At the same time, we have started reviewing guidelines for Pecosin School Board members in our work session and talked about the guidelines, which are a little bit more specific. I think this is at a higher level. What we're talking about is more every day to us and more meaningful to us. So, you know, just to give you a little background where what I've seen on it, and I haven't seen anything on there that I thought would jump up and conflict with what we have. Matter of fact, we may take some of this and incorporate it into our guidelines, which our guidelines are, will be scheduled for the September board meeting to be reviewed in-depth and add some more things to it. And so that September, October, we can try to tie those up and have those specifically for us. So on the code of conduct, is there any questions or anything on that anyone wants to discuss?
I have a few comments. If you don't, if you could give me a moment.
Yes.
Is there a requirement for this VSB A code of conduct? From the state?
No, there is not a requirement. This is something that VSB A sends out to all of its members, which are all the boards across the state.
So this is a generic code of conduct that's not specific to Pecosin?
Right.
Okay. You mentioned earlier that we have been talking about our guidelines. Are we going to title our guidelines a code of ethics?
We could do whatever the board wants.
Okay. So what we're talking about is adopting two different codes of ethics?
We're talking about drafting something for specifically Pecosin.
Okay. I guess my comment is that until I saw this board packet, I wasn't aware that we were going to do this, and we haven't discussed it. I think it's, I'm 100% behind having a code of conduct, but I would like the opportunity to discuss it amongst the members, maybe in a work session, and talk about, does all this really apply to us? I know it's very general, but there might be some instances where there's exceptions between our policies and what's stated here. I'd like the opportunity to go through what we have in written policy and compare it to this. And I'm not sure I understand the purpose of having two codes of conduct, one generic and one specific to us. So that's my comment on that. If we're going to vote on it, I guess I'll vote yes, because obviously I don't want somebody to come back later and say, "I voted against the code of conduct." So, you know, I'll say yes. My purpose would be is that we hold this and make it part of a work session, make sure that it's appropriate for what we're doing. I understand VSB A did it. It's generic, they want to cover all the bases. Might be something that's, maybe we want to change a word or add a particular topic that's not covered. Let's, that's where I feel I am on this. I don't know if you share those thoughts, but that's what I have to say.
I think if we're going to change something, we would change it in our own that we're adopting now, rather than in the state and what they have. I think we would change ours, you know, and modify ours to more customize ours, rather than say, "Okay, I don't like this on the VSB A code," and delete it, because then we'd have to send that back to them and get into that communications.
Is VSB A asking for us to send this back to them? We have not done this in the past, have we not?
I haven't seen it, no.
Well, actually, the board did sign it two years ago. They, we didn't bring it forward last year, and then I'll be candid, I think it just got lost in the shuffle to start last year. Prior to two years ago, I couldn't answer that question just because I wasn't here. They, I believe VSB A did send a communication asking if, you know, the board had signed it. I think they probably, they probably poll all their boards just to, you know, see if, have they in fact signed that code of conduct for school board members.
Okay.
How's your bills feel? Beth Ann?
I'm still thinking.
Carrie?
Were you speaking of our goals? Last year, we had school board goals.
No, I'm talking, no.
We never had our own code of conduct.
No, this, you have not, and to my knowledge, had your own code of conduct. Last year, you did not, you did not formally adopt the VSB A code of conduct that's in front of you tonight, but the year prior, as a board, you did. So the July of '08, it did come forward as a, as an agenda item. It just didn't last year. What I can't speak to is years prior to '08. And, yeah, we've not, your clerk, your, none of us were. I believe in the audience, we have somebody who's indicated that yes, in the past, the board has signed the VSB A code of conduct. Thank you so much. Mr. French?
I think we started talking about guidelines for board members just so that we had something on paper, because we really didn't have anything for Pecosin. You and I had seen some of this two years ago with Charlotte when we were out there at the team building and everything. But we started talking this year about some guidelines because we felt down the road, we should have guidelines for board members on conduct, some things they should do and some things they shouldn't do.
Something like that.
I'm kind of teetering back and forth as well. I certainly have no reservations whatsoever about signing a code of conduct or code of ethics, and I think I would speak for everybody sitting up here. On the same token, I feel that if this, if you're going to sign your name to something, I think it's worthy of a little discussion and just a little time to absorb what it is that you're, that you're signing your name to. I don't take signing my name to things very lightly. And reading over this, I honestly see no issues that jump right out at me. But like I said, I would not be opposed to discussion.
I'm tempted to think that it would be more ours if we sat down and talked about it, and we had some buy-in to it. I think it's worth talking about.
Robin?
I think it would be a good idea to have this VSB A code of conduct, and I don't have any problem with discussing it first and then signing it, and then perhaps we can have guidelines, not, you know, not termic, you know, code of conduct that we have too. But there's nothing wrong with having a state code of conduct and then our own specific, if we want to tailor it, you know, here. So I don't have any problem with it, you know, with adopting it now, but I also understand and would respect other members wanting to discuss it.
So do we have a motion?
I move to discuss it later. Is that what we're going to make a motion for?
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a second?
That's the feeling I'm getting.
Second. Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of second reading of policy revisions enclosed.
If I could just jump in for a second, you've got attached here the policy revisions that you were provided in first reading in June at your meeting. These revisions are all based on changes made by the General Assembly and also advice from the school board attorney. So I know that you've had it in June, we're bringing it forward to you for second reading this evening, and also then for action. We obviously bring these to you during the course of the summer because some of them will impact us as we move forward into the next school year. But just a reminder that they are all based on legislative changes, as well as legal changes per our school board attorney.
Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there anything that's changed?
Since June? No, nothing has changed since June. This is exactly the same packet that she received then. Yes, we just moved it forward as it was.
Well, I'll move that we, that we adopt the second reading of the policy revisions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
I believe I should abstain again, since I was not a school board member in general.
No, you actually can vote on this this evening as a school board member, so you're okay.
Okay, in that case, aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to nothing.
We have one item added, which is consideration of resolution authorizing superintendent to issue purchase orders and sign contracts for acquisition of equipment and services necessary to replace the boilers at Pecosin Middle School.
Mr. Papas mentioned this earlier, this was part of your approved CIP, and we were very pleased and thankful that council did approve funding for this for you in the spring. And so this is now enabling us to make the purchase of those boilers, so that we can get them in there and up and running before the winter cold starts this fall. So we will be coming forward to you a little bit later with the other part of the CIP family, which is the chillers. But right now, our emphasis is getting the boilers in for the beginning of winter. I have to say, Mr. Papas has been working very diligently over the last couple of months to get this done since we, for such a major project, it is a fairly short time span. But we are confident that we'll be able to move forward in time. And we have been working with the city in terms of the funding issue.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to sign the contract purchase orders necessary to acquire the replacement boilers for Pecosin Middle School.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of six to nothing.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? And we'll move down to communications and/or other matters by the school board and/or superintendent.
I guess I'll start us off again. I want to talk first about the jobs bill, because I know there's some questions out there. There's been quite a bit of media about the fact that just last week, the, we had a new jobs bill signed that is providing funding to schools across the country. Right now, we're really in the midst of getting more information about that. We've received a little bit of information from the Virginia Department of Education. We do know that this funding is intended for jobs. It looks as if it's going to be intended for jobs directly related to schools. So it is going to be different from the stimulus money that we received in the past that had some other options for it. I will tell you, based on the initial figures that we've seen, we really don't believe that we're going to see a large quantity of money. With the stimulus money, we did receive a total of $919,000. You know, we're estimating at most, we might see about $50,000. But what the DOE has not decided is how they're distributing this money. If they distribute the money based on the Title I, which is tied to student poverty, then we, we might be lucky if we could buy some teacher's lunch, essentially, with that money. It would be so minimum for us. So while it is a jobs bill, I'm not sure we're going to see enough funding to essentially save an entire job. But we are waiting from guidance from the state, as soon as we do get more information, especially about the dollar amount, we will provide that to all the board members. I do know that the state is having to send information into US DOE, I believe, by the end of the first week of September. So I'm anticipating we're going to get some of those numbers soon. We just don't have it. Once we know what those numbers are, then we'll bring that forward and talk about how we see using it. But we will, you know, obviously be using it for a job, if we get enough for a job. So I did want to provide that information, because I know there's a lot of talk out there. It's just, I just want to make sure the community understands this is not at the level of funding that we did see for, from the stimulus funding. I want to thank PEF for the donation, the $20,000. It is enabling us to purchase projectors, classroom projectors for the high school and some for the middle school, which is really going to benefit instruction. They have been very, very supportive of us financially, between the mini grants, now this technology donation, scholarships they're doing for students. So we really do appreciate the work they're doing in the community, especially during these very challenging fiscal times. I know that Dr. Rivia talked a bit about AYP. You know, I do want to stress that we're going to continue to talk about that in our next meeting, but for those that won't be there, do know we're also talking about strategies that we're going to use because we miss targets and we want to make those targets next year. So that's our goal for the future, as we continue to move up to that 100% pass rate that is required by the federal government. Exciting news, our teachers come back next week, next Monday. Our new teachers and new employees will start with us, and then all teachers come on Wednesday. So I was in a couple of the schools today and noticed some of the teachers were already starting to come back and get things ready. So we're very excited. A reminder to the community that school does start on the 7th of September, and I just want to give everybody the heads up that school buses, that means, will be rolling that week. So if your commute might change a little bit, because you've got school buses in front of you and kids trying to get to some new bus stops that we've had to make because of the budget cuts that we made last year, which is why, as Mr. Papas talked about, we had to change our bus routes, because we've had to make some personnel cuts in terms of bus drives. So we'll be here before we know it. So I think Melli gets her first time now.
Yes, she does.
Well, I'm just excited to be here. And so I give my report. So the report for the middle school is the open house for sixth grade is Tuesday, August 31st, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m. And the students with their booster shots on file can be given their schedules, and the parents may drop off a copy of their child's immunizations to the office before open house during office hours. And the open house for the seventh and eighth grade students is Tuesday, August 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And at the high school, the fall sports practices are already underway. And freshman orientation is Monday, August 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And there is also an orientation for all new students to the Pecosin City Schools for grades nine through 12. And that will be held Monday, August 23rd, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And for students to pick up their schedules and pay fees, 11th and 12th grades come Wednesday, September 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And the ninth and 10th graders come from, go Thursday, September 2nd, from 8:00 to 10:00. And that's it. And thank you for choosing me as a representative, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful year.
I just want to welcome Melli. It's going to be great having her on board. And Stevens Office Supply coming through for us yet again. We're just so thankful for the community and the businesses in this community and all you guys do, Charlie, you know, to keep us. And I've got some new military neighbors, so I've already been talking it up about student to student. So we're excited about that. Just want to give the reminder I always give every year about this time, and that is that school's getting ready to start. And so all ages, especially the older kids, you need to start waking up a little bit earlier because it's going to be hard. You can't sleep till noon anymore. And to just get ready and for the staff to, it's a new year, and that's always exciting. So I wish everybody a great start to the school year.
Melli, welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. You did a fine job. I don't know where the summer went. Looking forward to a new school year and pressing ahead with the, with the issues at hand. Mr. Pappas, congratulations on your new boilers, sir. May your winter be vent-free.
Oh, I have lots of thank yous as a new board member. Thanks to the city council for the appointment, particularly Tom Murray, who took time out to interview folks. Thank you to my fellow board members, particularly Chairman Diggs and Superintendent. Also, I have received some really good presentations from Steve Pappas, Bill Bowen, and Linda Revia. Thank you for the welcome and the training I've received. I'd like to say a thank you to Connie Sled, who suggested I apply several, many years ago, and I stayed interested for several years, and the encouragement I received from Charlie French. Looking forward to serving our students and our teachers and our administration. Only other things I have to say, as I had the privilege of playing in the band for the Peninsula Way GED graduation last Saturday, I think 225 or thereabout received their diploma. I understand over 1,000 folks on the peninsula participated in that. So even if you're an older adult, you should get a concert band for your, for your graduation. You should do it upright. But congratulations to all those folks who have worked hard. And I will have to say, I've also visited the drummers, who have been working ahead of the band, toiling in the early morning hours to get ready for the marching band practice to start this week. So they start about two weeks ahead, and they were working hard on a Thursday morning when I watched them. And that's all I have.
Hey, welcome to Melli. Glad to have you here and wanted to echo again, thank you to the Pecosin Educational Foundation and Stevens Office Supply. That's very, very nice to get some extra funds in this day and age, and looking forward to a great new year.
So Mrs. Wilson and I had a little transition lunch with Melli and Katie, and I can see that paid off very well. A great first start. Very nice, very nice. I met with Joe Johnson today from New Horizons to get that kicked off. As you know, last time we met, you all appointed me to that board, and he had some very interesting information to share with me that I will be sharing in our future meetings. He spoke very highly of Mrs. Sled, and, which is no surprise to anybody, and what a committed person she was. And I think what he was really telling me was, "You better step up." So I'm looking forward to that very much, and that's really all I have tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome Melli and Al to the board. You lost out sitting that far away because he got my chocolates. When I was sitting there, Katie got all the chocolate. But I'd like to welcome both of you. The, I think we had good staff presentations tonight. I'd like to know from Mr. Pappas if he's going to put those boilers in the museum across the street. I think they're not. The, I think it's, you know, everybody's getting ready for next month and looking forward to that. And I think we have a lot of things in place to start out the year on the right foot. And that's all I have. The board, after this, will adjourn into a work session. After there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.